changing from last week to this week, so welcome. I guess the clerk, you don't have, unfortunately, I know you do, right? Is that one working?
Oh, I have no idea.
No, not on the microphone.
We just have it.
I know. They're not working.
Okay.
That's why we have to project wildly and unfortunately I have a little hoarse voice, so bear with me. Oh, sorry.
So the only microphone in the room is here?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but and we are recording, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we do that Zoom, so other than the microphones, everything else you're working except for that.
I'm good. Okay, I can fly through this one.
Okay, okay. All right, great. Again, thanks, welcome. So I'd ask the clerk to please take a roll call.
Trustee Bachner.
Here.
Trustee Gillis.
Here.
Trustee Vasquez.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee O'Connell. President Aducee.
Here. Okay, so I ask everyone to stand and say, say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any consensus candidates? Thank you.
All right, great. So Margie.
I am happy to wait until after the Officer of the Year Award if you would like, or I can go now.
Um, doesn't matter, we have to you. We'll stay within the three to five minutes, that would be great.
You'll be, it'll be recorded.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm Margie Secander, River Oaks Drive. Thank you. Tonight I want to talk about the budget for 2025. Trustee Vasquez stated at the last meeting his concern about potential $1 million loss of grocery sales tax revenue. That quote makes it a little more serious on our commercial district deed and what we are zoning to bring in more economic development because we have to make it up from commercial property and quote, or tax residents. President Aducee, Matt Walsh, Finance Director McAdams commented in support of those statements. So you are linking offsetting grocery tax revenue with zoning to bring in more economic development or threaten to tax residents to bridge the gap. Changing zoning codes in two commercial district, TIF districts, would only benefit village from sales tax revenue, not the bigger pot of money that is property tax revenue held until 2038 or whenever the village board decides to release funds to the schools itself and all the taxing bodies. The board is already deficit spending and will again in 2025. I have some suggestions to close the deficit. First, the Madison TIF holds 1.78 million in TIF funds, but owes a little over 2 million mainly to the general fund for the 1.8 million in land held for resale. These figures have grown since the last balance sheet of April 2022. The Madison TIF likely will grow by another 400,000 to 900,000 as the fiscal 2025 revenues budgeted are too low. Second, the 2025 budget has 2 million per year for five years for a total of 10 million for lead service line replacement. The state of Illinois gave municipalities until 2042 to replace those lines. Some residents replace them themselves. Spending isn't fully known, doesn't have to advance that fast. So expenses are budgeted too high and should be spread out over longer time period. Third, personnel services shows increases above budget, 2024 budget, but not above projected. So a two and a half to three percent increase over projected totals 9.2 to 9.3 million or half a million dollars less than is in the budget. So the 2024 budget was set a half a million dollars too high, as is the 2025 budget. Fourth, property tax revenue budgeted looks low as 2024 jumped to half a million dollars. Fifth, the budget for a million dollars for public works vehicles in a year when we are again deficit spending. A bad practice may be for the board to review a draft budget before approving capital expenditures since the budget constraints can delay or cut expenses. You can find some savings in some of the other overestimated expenses like the water distribution system, sidewalk maintenance, travel and meetings, streetscape improvements of 306,000, five times what we spent last year and the three-year average. I'm not sure what those projects are, except maybe the street cameras, the Harlem Biduct and the EV charging. Are those really streetscape improvements? Ambulance revenues budgeted at 2 million. Is our budget at 2 million and shocking the village makes a profit off these fees charged to sick and elderly, but it is a profit center for the last several years. Page 94, you might look at the first goal, I think it's miswritten there. And I request that you consider these items and alter the budget before you approve it. Regarding communications, very quickly, the April 26 newsletter mentions quarterly events with the village president to get answers and provide feedback about village operations and initiatives. The timing is interesting after over 200 residents attended this last ZVA meeting on zoning changes, many of which were against, and six board members voted against those. I question whether such events should be held at a village vendor's place of business. Over the last 11 years as president, residents have had many questions and want feedback. Thank you.
Good, I welcome all. All right, thank you, Margie. So we'll go to the next meeting, others as you can. Okay, very good. I'm gonna move on to the next item, which, or maybe we get in, do you want to do the your comments or do you want to do? Police officers? But why don't we go ahead?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm done, let's do the police officer, I think that's a nice thing to do. So I welcome the chief to the awarding of the project people. Award.
Madam President, Village Board Administrator Walsh, on behalf of the Police Department, I'm honored to welcome Marty Dozen, who's here before us this evening, to receive the River Forest Police Department's Officer of the Year Award for year 2023. I would also like to welcome Marty's wife, who is here this evening, and also Marty's wife Bailey and daughter Kennedy. And we also have his parents, Kara Thornt and Matt Dozen, who's here this evening. We also have his brother Patrick that's with us and also his in-laws, Don Julitz and Rick Pearson.
Underwood.
I've never met them before, so they could have been in the audience.
Good stuff.
They will be. Officer Marty Dozen grew up in Wheaton and attended Bennett Academy and Lyle, where he played football and basketball all four years. Marty received all conference and all area honors in both sports and was named team MVP of both sports during his senior year. Officer Dozen attended California State University, San Bernardino, where he was a member of the baseball team. Marty graduated from Cal State with his degree in business administration. Officer Dozen was hired by the River Forest Police Department in December of 2021, which was one week after graduating college. It's pretty good for a college graduate to know what you want to do one week after. Officer, the Officer of the Year Committee met on March 6th of 2024 this year. The nominations submitted this year were for Officer Marty Dozen, Mark Catalano, Eddie Coleman, Anthony Cortez and Paul Micah. Tonight, we are honored to announce that Officer Marty Dozen has been named Officer of the Year 2023. The nomination described Officer Dozen as a self-motivated individual who consistently demonstrated superior performance in both criminal and traffic-related investigations. Officer Dozen displayed a high level of aptitude in the areas of wellness and physical fitness. Officer Dozen completed over 450 traffic stops in 2023 and led the department in criminal arrests. On June 9, 2023, Officer Dozen responded to the Sheridan at 800 North Harlem in reference to a resident who was actively choking. Choking, excuse me. Officer Dozen performed lifesaving measures, including a Heimlich maneuver. Officer Dozen was successful in his efforts and the object was dislodged, allowing for the resident to begin breathing again. The fire department arrived on scene and transported that resident to the hospital for minor treatment. Officer Dozen has been reported by his peers, always come to work with a positive attitude and serves the village of River Forest with distinction. Officer Dozen was described also as having a pragmatic demeanor and a high level integrity, which makes him a reliable asset to the department and also to the community. Officer Dozen will attend the law enforcement memorial in Springfield in May of 2024 as a representative for the village of River Forest. Marty, congratulations.
Wow.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Greg Lou. Madam President, do we have time for?
Yes, of course.
For the events.
Of course.
And Marty?
Yes.
You guys want to come forward for a group photo?
I mean, do the same, Chiefs all dressed up and looking good.
Matt, you're not coming in for this one?
Want to get Patrick?
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you so much. Now go ahead and I feel like the officials will say a few words about comments, so I'll start with Trustee O'Connell.
Okay, a couple of things tonight. First of all, as was laid out in the newsletter on Friday, happy to report after a lot of time spent with Whole Foods that they finally signed their deal, may have expanded. They're going to be expanded, 7,000 square feet, 7,000 square feet into the old rally space. We also in conversations with leasing company. There's one or two food users that are looking over there, potentially a soft food user. So those are all good signs for our economic development. Had an opportunity to attend a couple of events this past couple of weeks. I was able to pop into the bike, shame, a couple Saturdays ago. Seems like I think Trustee Gillis will give an update on everything, but it seemed like a great event. It was a beautiful day for it. Also had the opportunity to attend the Thrive Benefit, which is again, an organization that supports our community and other communities. It's our annual fundraiser. I think they did a great job with that. They raised a lot of money and if anybody's interested, I'm sure they would be happy to take additional donations. And lastly, if you've been to the Jewel lately or not, we're in the middle of Mr. Cordia Candy Days. They have, Mr. Cordia has teamed up with Jewel and Jewel is taking change from customers. But you can go on Mr. Cordia's site and also donate to Mr. Cordia. They have another great organization that serves ours and other communities. And lastly, Memorial Day parade's coming up. Forward to it.
Yeah.
I actually have no comments to also tell about the Memorial Day parade.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, couple of comments. Well, first, I wanted to thank Public Works for their work in the delivery of the finished compost. It's that time of season for those who have signed up to for the curbside composting program. And also for curbside composting, the schedule has changed back to weekly pickups of compost, which is nice for those of us who generate a lot of compost.
Yeah.
Then I wanted to thank D90's Green for Good team that held a polystyrene pickup and recycling event about a week ago. I believe this is the first time that they've done this and they received polystyrene, commonly known as by the brand name Styrofoam, from about 50 households, which is really good considering that I don't think it was publicized that much in advance. So if we publicize that this is an annual event, which I hope it will be, people will hold on to the polystyrene, not put it in the regular trash in anticipation of being able to dispose of it in the best way possible. If you're going to have it through this event next year. And then I wanted to also mention something that was on the material that the D90 gave out when you went through the recycling of the polystyrene, and that is that Dart Container Corporation in North Aurora accepts polystyrene seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So if you miss the event and you still have polystyrene and you don't want to keep it in your garage for a year, then that's, I know people who combine households worth of polystyrene, drive one car out to Aurora to get rid of it that way during the year. Then the last thing is that I wanted to say that we are continuing apace with planning the Juneteenth flag raising here in River Forest. I want to thank Matt for meeting with us and Ken and Erica for their work in getting the DEI volunteers involved. And also the library, our partner in that event, we've had meetings with them. And I wanted to thank them for putting the event in their mailing that went out to all the households. And we're very excited because just today we had a musical participant book. So we're now going to have a musical aspect to that program, very excited about that. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Katie. Information.
Nothing to add, thanks.
Brett?
Good evening, just one item. Kathy and I attended the Illinois Municipal League Lobby Day in Springfield, April 17. Although there are a number of pending legislative bills that are obviously interesting for most municipalities, there were two really that were hot. One was the grocery tax of that elimination that most municipalities were obviously fighting and lobbying against that happening, but it looks like the possibility it's going to go through. And what the governor was saying is that municipalities, they may make an amendment so municipalities can pass their own grocery sales tax. But our point was why change it if we're already collecting? Now, there is a little, one say maybe a coincidence that if this currently, as it's a state tax, the state of Illinois is not charged. They just distribute the appropriate funds or revenues to the municipalities. If this gets converted to a global tax, then the state will still collect it, but they tack on an administrative fee. And with that, they're protecting that the state will collect $5 million just on the administrative fee distributing the grocery tax to municipalities who choose to legislate locally. Not, not very, not very good. The other thing though is the, of course, the local government distributive fund is still, should have been at 10% and municipalities are still fighting to get it up to 10% and at least the current rate is at 6.4 or 7. So municipalities are still fighting for it. So we'll give it a good call. And I know Kathy might say a little more, but she attended a couple of these sessions as well and had a, went to one of the public here, so, but that's it.
Thank you, Russ.
All right, I guess just to remind everybody, I just got this in my mail, but I'm Houseful Waste Collection. It's in here. Well, everybody's excited about it, but you have to request by Friday, May 31st, and then you'll get a kick in the mail, like, because you really need to dispose of this the proper way. And LRS will provide the information, talk about it, so. It's hard to shoot a bat in the mouth, but we want all for residents, so take advantage of that. Second is tomorrow, our final presentations of the recommended climate action plan to be made by UIC students. At UIC, we have two classes that we're actually working on. So recognized approaches to how we can really elevate what we're doing now and so the utility of focus right now is going strategic plan, making it to the next level to a climate action plan. So I look forward to hear what the students say. It's great to have two different classes, we have a project deal, working on it. And yes, River Forest Bike Exchange for here, it was in the Wednesday Journal, really great program started by a resident, continues to be run by residents and volunteers. Thank you to the police that from River Forest who came and did register bicycles. We did register 85 bikes, which is 45 more of the last year, so we'll double the amount of bikes. It's, it's a really, really, you know, amazing program. It was a beautiful day and we look forward to year five next year, it's already in the books. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'd like to start with a land acknowledgement. So as we begin, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on land that was once and still inhabited by indigenous people, including the Ochipua, the Chipua, the Nomi, Padawami nations and more. We will remember our nation's history and honor the native people as stewards of this land that was colonized and that River Forest continues to be a place many people from diverse backgrounds live and gather. So excited about the Juneteenth events going on and definitely keep an eye out. We will begin to add them to our calendar as well, but Minnican University always does some wonderful things as well that are just extremely thought provoking. So if you are available, I would suggest going to that. And also want to remind folks that the inclusion Pride Walk that Lincoln School does in coordination with the village of River Forest and the flag raising will be happening on, I think it's Monday, June 3rd, and starts here at our flag post. Raise the flag and then walk around the block of Lincoln School. And we always get hundreds of folks out every year, it's bigger and bigger. And just thank you, Matt, and the entire village for all your support for that. And really looking forward to that, so that on your calendars.
All right, thanks, Erica. Just a few things, first of all, congratulations again to Marty and your family. Thank you for being here, thank you for everything you do. So on behalf of the board, trustees and myself, we are grateful for you and for all the police department that does great work for us here in River Forest. So again, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So some other fun stuff before I get into the more serious stuff. I was able to give a little presentation to the Daisy Scouts of Willard School. Daisies are like first graders, second graders, so it's very interesting to present how government works to those kids, but they really listen and they're really, really a lot of fun to spend time with. Anybody, I know a lot of you guys all read Facebook, but there's a lot of good posts out there regarding our police department handing out nice certificates to River Forest chocolates for those kids that actually are wearing helmets. And so it's a great encouragement, thank you to the police officers that, you know, stop the kids who wear the helmets and give them a River Forest chocolate, you know, get something free from River Forest chocolates, which is great. And also we handed out 17 helmets to Daisy Scouts, brand new helmets, so that they, we could encourage everybody to wear helmets. And that's again, an initiative that the police department under Joe, his team has performed. It's a great, it's been great and the community loves it, so thank you again on behalf of the board. So just a couple of things, as Russ said, we did go down to Springfield Lobby Day. It was quite interesting and wide, eyes wide open. I did personally meet with the governor with the four other mayors, including mayors came in from Oak Park. And our budget, it's serious. There's nothing, nothing funny about the budget and that the grocery tax is real. And I have complete faith in Rosie and her team and Matt and his team regarding our budget and how we look at our budget, both from revenue and expenses. In fact, we continue to win the distinguished budget presentation award by the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a high mark saying that we are doing good stuff and our budget is well-prepared. Again, the grocery tax is real, we have to figure that out as we move forward. The pension fund tier two changes are real, which could affect our budget in the long run. And the local distribution, the local government distribution fund and lack thereof of getting to back to our 10% is a real issue and it has direct effect on our budget. And I will have anybody that wants it, these are pages that Illinois Municipal League puts out. It's called 2024 Proposed State Mandates. And that is the state mandates legislatively, bills that affect local municipalities both negatively and positively. These happen to be negatively and there's about, I don't know, eight pages of them. So you can certainly go through these state mandates and you can see for yourself that some of the issues that this board deals with is real stuff and we take it very serious. Here's another book that I certainly like anybody to look over, it's called Prehensions. If anybody doesn't know what a preemption is, it's actually taking away our authority to do something. And that is as much an effect on our budget as state unfunded state mandates. So I'll leave this here for anybody that's willing to read it, it's good reading. We've got a lot of work ahead of ourselves, but again, I'm very confident in where we are. So thank Matt, thank you Rosie and Kiki for all your great work. That's all I have.
Oh, can I just say one more thing about that? Maybe a couple of those issues that are directly affecting River Forest, we could put in our communications along with the representatives that are important. So I would say Chris Welch, because Lobby Day is a great day, you know, all these different organizations go to Springfield on certain days to lobby, but you don't have to go to Springfield, making just a phone call into your representatives, making a phone call into us, we take those very seriously, right, or in notes. And I know for sure in Springfield, they tally those, because I've talked to them about it. And that's sometimes how they make their decisions, is how many of their residents are interested and wanting them to go yay or nay on a certain topic. So maybe that's something we could do.
Great idea. And we will do that, because there are some that, there's also others that are overarching, as you know, but you're right.
Yeah, maybe whatever you feel is appropriate.
Sounds good, Erica. Okay, very good, thank you very much. And so we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Can I ask that we pull items 5C and 5F, please?
5C. Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, go to pull that, you want to pull that off?
I'm sorry to do that.
So we're going to pull C, D and F.
C, D.
Yeah, C, D and F. All right, so if I can get an approval for A, B, E, G, H, I and J.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items 5A, B, E, G, H, I and J.
Second.
Okay, very good. So why don't we talk first on, oh, let's get, I'm sorry, any questions on that? Any questions on those items? If not, if you could take the book and obviously read the item.
Consent agenda item A, Village Board of Trustee Meeting Minutes, April 8, 2024. B, Administration Department Report. E, Right-of-Way Agreement, Property Owners at 553 Thatcher Avenue for an underground sprinkler system in the public right-of-way. G, Approval of Contract, Decan Computer Consultants, Village IT Consulting Services. H, Amendments to Chapter 9-6-9 of the River Forest Village Code, Schedule of Fines and Penalties, Vehicular Violations Ordinance. I, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement with International Association of Firefighters, IAFF, for firefighters and fire lieutenants. J, Adoption of Fiscal Year 2024 through 2025 Compensation Plan Ordinance. Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee O- Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr.
Okay, very good. So let's go move on to five Cs. If I can get a motion to approve five C in a second.
I move to approve the proclamation designating May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four as compost awareness week.
Second.
So I asked that we pull this and I appreciate this proclamation and its explanation of all the benefits of compost. And I'll also mention, one of the most important benefits is the reduction in CO2 gases for, by pulling compost out of the landfill trash. This proclamation reminded me that when we were negotiating the latest trash pickup contract with LRS, we talked about converting our curbside compost program to an opt-out program. And we talked about doing that at that time, especially if we saw that there was an increase in residents who are subscribing to the paid compost program. I have heard undoubtedly that the subscriptions to compost has, the compost program have risen. The idea to shift our compost pickup to an opt-out program was recommended by our Sustainability Commission. And I would ask that we raise this again and ask the State Sustainability Commission if they would, you know, refresh that recommendation. And I'd like to see that at the board. I think now is the time for this.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. I mean, I, I agree. We can re-address it. Yeah, I mean, in terms of having an opt.
And going back to the discussions with LRS, they said that they were willing to discuss it with us. My understanding is that the numbers have increased. I don't think it's based on that necessarily, but I think it helps. It shows the increased interest.
They get relief for it, right?
Yes, they were happy to do it.
To it, right. Yeah, I think the question was, was, or was it for anybody? Yeah, sure.
So would the process be then to, I don't care, is the process to ask the Sustainability Commission to take a fresh look at this and provide us with a recommendation? Or just to go straight to LRS to start the discussions? What would be the right way to go about doing this?
Yeah, I think we could kind of run them parallel. Have to discuss with Sustainability Commission to get their input on how the progress has been with the subscription. And then we can also reach out to LRS to see if they're still willing and able to do that.
I would recommend Katie that you bring LRS into the organization, have a work together and then come back with a combined agreement that this is working on.
Well, I, in my opinion, I'd like to hear what the Sustainability Commission's recommendation is first. And once we have that, that what we want nailed down, then we talk, start the discussions with LRS. That's just what seems to land with me better, rather than bringing LRS right in right away. Let's figure out what we want first. And how we did it to go. It's probably pretty straightforward. But we're not the first municipality to want or to have an opt-out curbside compost program.
I don't know. Whatever. I mean, we can do that. And if we say we need to put LRS in discussion, then we'll have the discussion with that. If they say we can make that discussion. Okay, so you want this pulled? You want the?
No, it, this proclamation just reminded me that now is the time to discuss it. We said at the, when we renegotiated that agreement, I can't really remember why we didn't make it opt-out. I was disappointed about that. It felt like we had had plenty of lead time to build it into that contract. But in the end, we ran out of time somehow. So now I'm bringing it back up because this proclamation reminded me about it and I think now is the time. So I, I, let's pass the proclamation. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, okay. It seems pretty straightforward. Okay. Any other comments on C? Okay, hearing them, that's a few.
Is there a motion?
I'll read it and then. Consent agenda item C, Proclamation Designating May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four as compost awareness week. Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes. Okay, so item D, this is the National Therapy Animal Day proclamation. If I can get a motion in a second.
I can make a motion to approve consent agenda item D, National Therapy Animal Day proclamation.
Second.
Okay, very good. Susan or?
Yeah, I just pulled it because we do have a guest here.
Yes.
Susan and her dog, Bo, her dog. Susan basically asked that we, you know, consider this proclamation, National Therapy Day is tomorrow. So we're able to bring it in on time. And I don't know, Susan, if you have any.
Well, Bo is very sad that it's residents officers though, because we visit them in River Forest, among others. We visit River Forest once a month for a little stress relief. We also visit, we go to the Heights VA Hospital, we're in Wolf Creek, Waverly, we're going to Waverly. We're at River Forest Library. I'm trying to get us into the elementary schools here. We're not there yet. But we really, we really appreciate it. We've lived in River Forest for twenty-two years and we're over on Park here. But this is Bo. He is six years old. He's been a therapy officer. He loves it. Every time he sees me get the vest out, he's like, yes. He plays, you know, people peppy and give me treats, like how bad could that be? And in any case, thank you so much. We really appreciate the proclamation. We, it's, most people don't know necessarily about therapy odds and the protection that they could do. Well, just by having our open media experience. So thank you very, very much.
Can Bo come to our meeting?
We may need multiple of all.
You've been doing this for a long time, correct?
We've been doing this for two and a half years.
Okay.
We're part of two organizations. We are certified as pet partners, which is a national organization that registers. Yeah, a book of a bunch of training and testing and stuff. And we're right now training to go to the top level, which is to go visit crisis intervention. That dual crisis intervention, no, we're not certified to do that. Bo and I aren't certified to do that at this point. But we hope you will be at some point.
Yeah, my child visited a, at the River Forest Library, maybe when they were three years old and now they're sixteen. So the River Forest Library has been very wonderful.
They haven't had anybody there for a while. We're trying to get a program reassembled. It's, it won't read to a person because they're like insecure about their voting and maybe they don't like it or they're shy. They'll read to him all day and he absolutely loves it. And if they don't, if they don't show him the pictures, he takes his paw and puts it on their arm, you know, turns to turn around and show him some pictures in the book, so.
What a cutie. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention and giving us the opportunity to make everybody else aware of it.
So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, now let's vote it in.
Consent agenda item D, National Therapy Animal Day proclamation. Trustee Brennan.
I want to thank you for everything you're doing. Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
And the last one is the F. So if I can get a motion to approve, Matt?
Motion to approve item F, contract approval, Nexamp, Nexamp Solar LLC, newly solar anchor account.
Second.
So I pulled this. I'm intrigued. It's the first time that I have seen this contract. And it's the first time I've seen a contract of this type with the village. So I have, I think I'm generally in favor of it, but I have some questions. I don't know. Are you the one who would be answering the questions, Matt?
Yes, I wasn't able to attend, so yes.
So.
I'm sorry, Lance and his team also reviewed the contract.
Excellent. So can I just go ahead and start with my questions then? Okay. First, I'm wondering if I understand correctly how this contract works.
Which is not, yeah, which is somewhat complex.
So my understanding is that it covers four things of the village. Public works, street lighting, alley lighting. And then for some inexplicable reason, Madison Street lighting is separated off. So covers those four things.
I think that's right.
Yes, the Madison Street lighting, when the streetscape was done on Madison Street back in twenty sixteen, that was created as a separate account with ComEd.
Okay, thanks. And then, so then my understanding is that what happens is that every month, NexCamp is going to give us a ten percent worth of the bill in credits. And then NexCamp is going to give, invoice us for ninety percent of the usage, the value of the usage. And then River Forest is going to pay the invoice for the ninety percent of the usage. So we essentially save ten percent every month.
On our payments, right.
Right. And then how do the residents see those cost savings? How does that show up for residents? Like, I actually pulled my comment, an old paper comment bill of mine that shows franchise cost on here, which I think is the amount that each resident pays to cover a percentage or to cover these costs of the municipality's electricity. So how, how does this show up in real life for a resident?
So, so the village, village hall and the public works garage on Forest Avenue are covered by the franchise agreement. So those two accounts are not eligible for this program. This program only applies to the villages for other accounts, which are the pump station up on Berkshire and those alleys, streetlight and Madison Street side. So it's not, it's a separate group of accounts than what the franchise agreement covers.
How does, okay, thank you. How does the village pay for these four things right now?
In, in our budget, there's a utility line item that will pay to ComEd. The pumping station, for example, is going to be in our water sewer fund, but the, most of these will be in our, in our public works budget as just a utility line item. Also that savings will be seen on those line items.
Okay, so we'll see it as a savings in our budget. The residents aren't going to see it on their bills.
Correct.
Because the residents don't pay for those four things right now.
We do.
Gotcha. Well, we, I guess we pay for it in a less direct way.
More direct.
A different way.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, and then how are our Nexamps, Nexamp rates tied to ComEd's rates? How do we know that those, that Nexamp's not going to raise its rates higher than ComEd's to recoup its ten percent loss, loss in quotes?
That is a good question. And this contract covers that that's a highly regulated area to the losses.
So we're sort of going from one vendor. I mean, I, I want us to use local community solar. I just want to make sure, this is a twenty-year contract. It's very rare to see a twenty-year contract. Our waste contract is either five or seven years. So when we lock into something for twenty years, I want to, I mean, a lot can happen at twenty years. There can be a lot of advances in techno, solar technology and wind technology and other technologies. I think I'm for this, but I want to make sure I, I know what I'm looking at here.
Well, there might be protection in the right.
One thing I saw was two percent credit escalation. I don't know what that means. It's on page thirty-eight. Does, does that somewhat answer my question? I don't even know what, what credit escalation means. Matt, is there a, is there a deadline that this is tied to? Maybe we can revisit this with some of those questions answered.
Well, I would, yeah, I mean, we can all just do that, of course. I think I would also, based on twenty years, do we have an out on the?
I did not see much of an opt-out for River Forest on this contract.
Yeah, there isn't much, but there's not much, not much of a way to enforce the length of the contract of this type. The answer, the village would have changed it forward.
Yeah, but I don't know if that's how we want to manage it.
I would need to look, I would need to look at the termination.
If one manages this.
I would need to look at the termination provisions again under the justice.
All right.
Well, Mike, the idea of this contract, I'm concerned about being locked in for twenty years. For example, like, we're not going to get solar on our streetlights probably, but we could have a solar array at the pumping station that could actually be a better cost savings for us. And I know we have some small, like Daisy, so small array there right now, or we're going to be putting it initially.
Including the budget, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, things are happening in this field and I understand that they want us as, or the thought is to have us as an anchor account. I assume that's something like a beta test. You got to have so many anchor accounts to make the thing work. I just want to make sure this works for us too.
Yeah. And here, we can, we can pull it. I just ask Katie, maybe in the future, you can help us know what those issues are. So that either we say, here are your answers, or you're right, we need to go back and renegotiate.
This is the first time I've seen this.
Yeah.
I've never, I've never, this is the first time I've heard of this contract was, you know, when this packet came out. So, or when I got a chance to look at it. And I would, and I would, I would think that for something like that, that we've never had, something that we've never had before, that maybe it wouldn't be in the consent agenda. It would be, you know, specifically on our agenda to discuss so that we can educate ourselves about what this is and how it works.
Yeah, I think, I think putting on the consent agenda simply because we thought it was a good idea and it, you know, it's good for River Forest, but there are some legitimate questions we will need to look at. So we can easily take it off. And I would ask that any other trustees that have any other questions regarding this contract, let us know. I mean, let Matt know.
Yeah, we'll take a look at those. We did look at it. We went back to that. There was a little bit of back and forth. There was some hesitancy to move on some items, but we'll.
Thank you. And did the, did the Sustainability Commission review this and give a recommendation for it?
No, this was just administrative. They had reached out to offer it. We saw it as an opportunity to, we found out that the savings were for those four accounts and we just proceeded as, so it showed that the Sustainability Commission is not.
That'd be a good idea to have their eyes. Again, I'm, I'm generally in favor of this. I think it's a good idea in general. Devil's always in the details.
Well, I think going to the sustainability, I mean, they've got other things. I don't know. I think we let it go administratively. It, there's, it's a good thing, like you said, we need some fine tuning. And let's, they can, you know, Katie made your point, there's some things that we need to look at, you have good points, so we'll do it.
Do you want to withdraw the motion then, or what?
I think you should. I think, you know, I think it's probably the best thing to do. And then we'll take a look at it and administratively, let's look at what issues that have to protect us.
Trustee Gillis, will you withdraw your motion?
Sure. Is there any particular wording on this, please, that I would go?
No, just if you do.
I approve to withdraw my motion.
If this is not like a zoning matter, we don't need to table it. If you need surgery, bring it back.
When you're ready. Okay. So I agree that we'll just try to, it can't handle administratively. All right. All right, very good. So I think that concludes our consent agendas, items. And we'll move to new business. Got motion here? So if I get a motion, oh, we have. Okay, sorry. Yep, thanks. So we have the park district here. And this, Mike?
Good morning.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for having us. I'm Dennis.
Side, side one?
Just down.
I'm Dennis Cilly. I'm the treasurer on the Park Board. We're going to present to you the Constitution Park project. Pretty exciting project. We've been discussing the parks after planning for the last 18 months. Constitution Park is the first one we are hoping to bring out, which will hopefully take place next year. Two very exciting parts is the playground will now be 100% inclusive. We will also be adding, we stand on that with a fifth inch hill, so. Mike, can I show you the? So, you know, so I'll, I'm going to walk through the project and everybody we're at right now with it. So, as Dennis said, you can go over the last 18 months. Constitution Park is one of the projects. Some of the projects we're moving forward, some we haven't decided yet. You know, Wednesday we'll talk about stone elements of that for other discussion, but this one, we begin first. Originally started because we were trying to capture an Oslake grant. We did apply for, did not receive it. We know why we didn't get it. We feel we have an excellent chance. Next year's order will be applying for it. So, starting this process now, one does it, one tactic to the other, just want to get ahead. So we do get the Oslake, we break ground though. So this is an estimated budget of 1.6 million. Again, we won't be asking, we were 600,000. Bring it down, bring it down. This is an upgrade project. As Dennis said, we, the new item that is the reason we're here is bringing a shelter with a bathroom combo. So change of use, that would be it. Everything else is moving. Rearrangement, realignment, improvements to the facility itself. So. So here is the existing site plan of the park. You can see the playground in the, well, I'm going to do it, bottom left corner. We have a two to five, a five to 12 year old playground there, about 17 years old. So it's in its useful life. To the top of the park, you see sand volleyball, ice rink area that was created about 10 years ago when we built in the Willard Bowl. Ice rink formed up there. It is lit, so we have two poles there. I'll talk about reusing those as we redevelop the park. Well, then when we go back down, the ball field to the bottom right, that is on District 90 property, but we do manage that within an agreement. So our goal is to pull that back on park site. And then you can see the layout for the soccer field. Size configuration always changes depending on use and where. So give you a couple of pictures, what's that right now? So this is a picture of the playground that we have. In the foreground is five to 12, in the background is the five year old playground. Here's our volleyball court, ice rink. So we do have two sand volleyball courts and an ice rink. Other nature hasn't been, it's quite, we've got here, we've got about eight days on it. So we'll keep offering it as long as, as. Here's the soccer field that you saw. Again, it's a seven versus seven field. So it's a younger age group than we use right now. And then the ball field. I don't even know how old ball field, I know it's over 25 years old. So it's without a doubt our oldest ball field that we have, and it's the only ball field we have not done any improvement so far. So, here is the site plan. We've been working with JSD land planners. We've also held multiple public meetings last August and September on this. So we already got a lot of public feedback. We followed the plant development process, the mailing segment. We will do that again as we start this process, so. Feedback was very positive. Most of the energy in those meetings was focused on the design of the playground and getting it closer, closer to be a universal accessible playground versus what the original plans were. Very little other comments. And again, we had somebody commenting just on their memorial trees that they have planted up there. It's very short of, we're not intact by the project. So you'll see here, we did move the ball field onto our park, basically just reversed it over. Playground is moving out to the north, well, it's the corner of Greenfield National Downs to the Greenfield. So the playground is no closer to the street versus the previous location. Sand volleyball has been slightly, it's been 390 degrees in this situation. It's same size as what's out there right now. And then, as Dennis said too, in the middle, you have a sitting plaza and then a shelter with bathrooms in it. Do you have a question?
Oh, no. I was just finding the monument, I'll have a tree to give myself a reference, sorry.
No laser on this.
I see. Going down.
Right, so there is a sitting plaza in the middle. You kind of see that circle by that triangle, it's a tree, you know, planting there. And then benches facing both amenities for use. And then benches would be wrapped around the playground. The playground will be over surfaced. So it would be completely wheelchair accessible. So we're very deliberate about that. So it doesn't show on this, and the reason we didn't show it is because this is part of our Oslake application. Where the ball field was, that soccer field that you saw in the previous pictures, seven and seven, is moving over to D90 progress. So we've already had an agreement with them on that. We just can't show it because it is within our own group zone. So that will be part of the project. It's just not under the funding for the Oslake application. So, got a couple of pictures. So here's the renderings of the playground. It is, the previous playground was a two to five, a five to 12 year old playground. Now, because it's a universal accessible playground, everything meshes together. So it's one large playground, got a large modular component, swings, a lot of fun things begins. There's the opposite view, musical instruments, there is no pot can. Regular swings in the unit too. And then this is conceptual of the shelter. The only difference is that Kugel on top would not be there. It's still working. It probably would with the stone base. We're still working on that. And at the end, you can see the two bathrooms and then a small storage closet for utilities. Water heater, unit for our lightning detection system. We're looking for cameras and parks. So that would have to be, you know, the controls would have to be like that. The shelter itself is 20 by 20, so like, six, eight tables, nine extra, a lot of people. But the good use that we use for programming for community using for all, but that's. So again, we do have an agreement with D90. They're aware of this project. They have supported it, we can go later support. That greenness that we'd be creating for ball field would now be used as soccer field. Trees. So we do have a couple of trees that have to be removed, a couple larger ones. So you can see we have three fair quality locuses and one great quality maple that we need to be removed. There's also a smaller good quality maple that we won't be able to try and plant. Those would be where the location of the ball field will be moved to. And then at the playground location, we have a couple of quality ones. One is a one of our memorial trees, we basically that is part of the process. Anyway, so we're calculating about 88 inches of diameter that would be, need to be added to the project as a result of the trees. And just, the locusts are their fair quality, their life is short term, you know, we're all through, remove those locusts.
Mike, are those trees going to be replaced in that, back into that park? Or would you say the park system is somewhere else?
So our goal always with these projects is as much as we can get in the park that it's at. And then if we have to go over somebody else, we. So the new trees, you know, they're going to be three, three and a half inch trees. So we will talk here, 25 trees probably out of this. So there would be, especially over where Willard has its parking lot, we can do a lot of plantings over there. With the old playground removed, there's going to be a lot of plantings being brought back in there. So as much as we can get into the park, we'll put back in.
So Mike, yeah, which is a great thing, but, you know, I think you and I had some conversations about some trees that we planted like in the prior year. I mean, they just don't make it and they die consistently. I don't know if it's the kind of tree that you plant or when you planted. I don't know, but.
Well, I think, you know, we're losing trees and a lot of it's just soil condition like prior year, you know.
Can we do something about that, like bring in better soil?
If we're replacing them now, we make bigger holes with more soil amendments, you know.
Just seems to me you're spending a lot of money on trees that die. And then replant, and it dies again. So I don't know.
Well, the majority of trees are still making it through. You know, the obvious, like you said, we do lose trees.
Yeah.
So.
Just observation.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I agree with you. Do everything we can to.
Yep, yep.
Is there a different, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, question.
Is there a different kind of tree that you're using? So like, we're taking away a maple and we're putting back maple or?
So we, we have a tree memorial program that like outlining about 10 trees that we like. We're really trying to go with higher quality trees, like oaks, ginkgo. We're trying to stay, we don't really like oak this ash. Any fast growing, dying ones. Maple circle would be one that would be replaced and some of that.
That would last.
So anything we're doing, we're always trying to do better. So in this case, we would, we'd be taking out three locusts. We would have to put any locusts back in. It would all be oak, elm, this is the elm. Maple, ginkgo trees, blue trees, sickle. Or hardier, or hardwood plants.
Sure, maybe for the locusts, because I'm not great on tree varieties. Are those smaller ones on that field where like kids climb into?
The three locust trees are over by the ball field. They're larger trees right now, right? So they're 20, you know, 20 inches, like.
Okay, so like over by Greenfield, there are ones where the kids can kind of, and then.
They're over by Franklin, by the baseball field.
Right.
Yeah, there's a shade area of like four trees that's on wood that are being impacted. So.
I just had three quick questions. One, with regard to the bathroom. Is that just a general standard room bathroom that you use any time?
It'll look a little similar to what we have at Washington right now, two single bathrooms. Single fixture in the sink.
All right. And then the second question was with regard to the shelter, are you expecting residents to try to work that out for whatever they're?
We would be offering is some type of, I mean, our residents would get it for free if you have to work it out for.
So they wanted to use it for some type of picnic, family picnic?
Oh, sure.
That's actually, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. And then the third is just, given the school construction, construction timelines. When do you, I know you're waiting on funding right this far, like what would you get, all this would occur, like when would you?
We would be like to break ground, delivery schedule, May 13th to June 1st next year. A lot of it's contingent on how fast Oslake announces that to, late in January. That would be just enough time. Really, we're on hold with design. I can't do anything because of that grant. Because that's not reversible. So we, everybody's achieved a system and we can be ready to begin bids out quickly and get things by April.
Would you expect school to be out at that time or not?
Yes, we would be working around D90 to make sure whatever impacts that we would have. We may be starting to demo, you know, until we get a better handle on design and bidding. But it would be around June 1st. The, your slide is up correct. There's no change of use and a little increase part. It seems like there's a change in this year. Have you talked to the residents or participants on there? Well, we've had multiple meetings and that was not, there was not a concern with all of these. And then, and we do have picnic tables that are now, most of them are just going under shelter now.
And then my other question is, if you work with engineering on bathrooms and outfits, you know, attention retention and not with your old JG.
We have not had any engineering discussions on this. We're not anticipating any like NWRD guidelines. It didn't sound like this would fall under the criteria. And if it did, it would be minimal and we covered it under grant again.
Do we think that there's anything, because I know the existing, I think the consisting volleyball area or part of that field when it rains, I mean, it feels like there's a large concentration of water that pools there. Is there any concern that that would impact the play area? Not that that's being moved out and closer to where that big pond of water sort of happens?
No, well, the sand volleyball area right now, we have not noticed any water tension issues in here at all. It's.
Maybe I'm missing the water from the place.
So, you know, because right now, it's recessed now, it would be continued to die in that way. So that sand, and then, you have a foot of sand on top of it. So whatever goes in there, at least from the playground perspective, that elevation, probably at least two feet below.
Yeah, just because it feels like it's closer to that part of it, so. We want to make sure that that wouldn't be.
I mean, there is, when they go through this, it's an engineer and we may end up putting in something, running it in there. Down with the Willard Bowl, we didn't do it, we did the upgrades from Willard Bowl because the soil is very sandy. And it's difficult to swathe. That's standing, not the Sam Oliver, Sandy, other.
So is the expectation, we're talking about the kids, so is the expectation that since off the area, I just would hate to see construction tour around where your kids are. And you would actually close the playground during a certain time, or how is it often, or do you expect it to work?
Well, the playground would operate no different than how it is right now. So you've got to make improvements, right? It's a new playground. It's in a different corner, but the distance from the street is the same. And the use of the playground, one playground the use is, you know, the difference is it's more immediate accessible.
Are you talking about construction?
I was going to say.
Or you're talking construction.
You're talking about during construction.
Oh, okay.
He was asking about the time.
Yes.
Right, right. So if we go into construction, the park probably closed during that period.
Is there temporary fencing or?
Yeah, everything would be fenced completely around. Just like, just like it was at Washington. Yeah, if the playground at Washington, in that case, we had chain link fence. The size of this probably would dictate more of the orange fence that we had installed. And then one last thing, the traffic, I see increased traffic as a result of this. That's our interconnection. Do you want to have any other questions?
No, I think it's a nice improvement. So Dennis and Park District and Mike, thank you for bringing it to us. I think it's going to be a good addition to our meeting.
Right, thanks for hearing us.
Mike, I just want to say, I was at one of the resident meetings in August. Yep. Because I am a neighbor, so I got the notice and heard a neighbor speak very eloquently about making it more accessible. And so, and inclusive, and so I appreciate that. It sounds like the Park District listened to that seriously and took that into consideration. And I think that that was important, so I appreciate that.
Make sure to hear it.
He's an advocate, which is good. Hope I said to Dennis, thank you, you know, it's good to have an advocate on the purple. Okay.
See you in a couple of moments for my next project.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have item B, which is the adoption of our fiscal year 25 budget. If I can have a just motion, you'll have a second. If I can have a just motion, you'll have a second.
Motion to approve ordinance, dropping the annual budget for the fiscal year, missing on the first day of May, twenty twenty-four, and ending on the third day of April, twenty twenty-five, for the village of River Forest, Illinois.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Rosie, I've pretty much went through most of it. There are no questions, probably.
I have a question.
Sure.
From the resident who spoke earlier about the, the lead service program, it sounds like we're condensing it into five years.
No, 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 she, she said that, go ahead, Rosie, answer.
No, if, if you look in, in the budget, when you have a chance, if you look on page sixty-two, you can see that it's a, it's a twenty-year project, so it's two, two million over twenty years, it's a forty million dollar project, so, I mean, we're, we obviously, we're going to reevaluate every year, but it's a, it's a twenty-year project, so.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, two million a year?
Over twenty.
Over twenty years?
Yes.
Two million dollars is the estimated cost to replace about two hundred service lines, which is a the pace needed to replace all of the, the lines in River Forest. We hope that that will come down as we get a more accurate inventory, but we wanted to at least start off on a aggressive pace to do so, so there's not, there's not a lot of room to lower that number, currently, certainly don't want to have to spend two million dollars a year, but it's a mandate, it is a, it's a lot thousands of service lines to replace.
Okay, and that puts us within the timeframe that State of Illinois requires us to finish it?
Yeah, I think twenty forty-two.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right, so, so it's not condensed into five years?
No, no.
No.
And I have one, the amendment you're talking about on page ninety-four, is that anything, or?
I wrote down first goal miswritten.
Under Edman's goals.
I have. Page ninety-four.
Regarding collaborative efforts with the township and Concordia and other community partners to expand implement abilities, they are aged from dementia from initiatives. So I, I, she didn't sit down, say what was. There's a little.
Is there somewhere where that language is used somewhere else, where maybe it's not exactly?
No. In fact, I think it's, that's referring to also the ten thousand dollars that the township gets, when you share it, over a year. For dementia. No. So.
I believe there, there was a line about the streetscape improvements that, that, I believe is all for the North Avenue, uh, streetscape design work.
Yeah, she was confused with the streetscape one.
Yes. You know, like I've said in the past, we budget conservatively with salaries, we, we budget based on contracts.
Yes. All right, super.
Yeah.
Um, all right, I think I can give all things.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Sorry, made me laugh.
That's good, all right, super, well, that ends then our regular scheduled, or our regular agenda. So all the.
On the motion.
Moved into executive session.
Motion to enter your executive session pursuant to a five Illinois C S one twenty, five Q C eleven, to discuss pending probable or imminent litigation and the village board will adjourn after the executive session, will now return to open session.
Second.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
President Ducey. Meeting adjourned.